Welcome everyone to this board meeting on September 8th, 2020, 5:30 and we will begin. Customary before we get into business, we invite everyone to join us at their pleasure. Our invocation, our recitation which will be done by Mr. Tim Whiteire. We will recite the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Booth, would you lead us?
Sure.
All right, then we're going to hear the national anthem. I believe that we have a treat, a recording from our students. Read our mission statement. Terry, can you handle that?
Sure.
All right. Our translation services by Dr. Belinda Reyes. Congratulations, doctor. Just mentioned that my youngest son is doctor too, the physician type, and I'm like, I gotta call you doctor. He says, yes. So with that, let's all please rise. Mr. Whiteire, thank you. If you'll join me as I pray.
God, we come for you this evening always grateful that we have the unique honor to come before our Creator, to lift up our cares, our concerns and our requests. We pray as always that you would provide wisdom and discernment for this board, that we might make decisions that would first and foremost honor and please you, that would work in the best interest of our community and those that we serve, and that you would continue to keep your hand of protection and guidance and wisdom and discernment upon each one of us, not just on this dais this evening, but across this community as we navigate uncertain times with fear and uncertainty, but yet hope knowing that you are truly in charge. We thank you for who you are and what you do. It's in Christ's name that I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the flag of the United States, one nation under God, indivisible, evergreen and justice for all. Record. Oh, I guess. Please remain standing.
Make sure we have one. We do not have one. We will have one for our next meeting.
Terry, would you please?
Yes.
Remain standing for the mission statement.
Oh, great. Our mission statement, inspiring all learners to reach their highest potential as responsible productive citizens.
And for our translation services, Dr. Reyes.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon. My name, you three all have a seat. Thank you for that. Good afternoon. My name is Belinda Reyes and I'm here to provide translation services.
So we'll go through board comments before we begin.
I'll be very brave. Just want to thank all our teachers and staff who are back and our students who are back at it either in person or virtually. And I know it's hard. It's very different. That's one thing I've heard from a bunch of different students. It's very, very different than what it used to be. So I know it is different, but I'm glad we're all bearing through this and trying to get through it together. I think we made adjustments as we had to, Dr. Pace and our team has, and I thank you for that.
Good work, Ms. Backer. Ms. Castillo?
Yes, I do want to echo Mr. Backer's comments specifically. Flexibility is really important and the team has been very flexible in the past two weeks. I do want to give a big thank you not only to our team, but also our families for being really flexible and communicating, and for our team for keeping everybody informed. Yeah, so it's been an interesting two weeks, but it's definitely shown the leadership that we have and the care that we have for our community. Thank you.
Very well, Ms. Castillo. I think you both really expressed my ideas in the past. Mr. Whiteire?
I echo the same as them.
Very well. I had it all written down. But they said it right. I know. Dr. Pace?
Yes, Chairman Soto and members of the board, I am excited tonight to be able to share with you and also our community that while certainly, you know, the pandemic has kept us somewhat focused and distracted from our true mission, it's not kept us completely off course. We tested this summer, not a lot of students, but some for the first time test takers for the Algebra I EOC, as well as in some retake students. And of our first time test takers, I'm proud to report that eighty percent achieved three or above. So got that Algebra I EOC graduation requirement out of the way, and an additional thirty-three percent of our retakers, which I know doesn't sound like a lot, but still that was good, and thirty-three percent were at level two. So that means they're one step closer to knocking out that graduation requirement. You know, one of the things that will be coming up in just a couple of weeks are the fall EOC examinations. The state does not give us an opportunity to have digital learners do that digitally. It all has to be face to face. So our schools, particularly our high schools, are currently scrambling to make sure that they have plans in place for social distancing to administer those key exams. But we want to give all of our students the opportunity to meet those critical graduation requirements so that that's one less thing worrying over their little heads. So just wanted to share some good news.
Thank you, Dr. Pace. Our next item of the agenda is also an appointment to transfers. I believe you have one, Dr. Pace.
I do, Chairman Soto and members of the board. I am super excited tonight to bring forward as our assistant principal for your consideration for our Adult Learning Center of Osceola, ALCO, Ms. Michelle Overstreet. Michelle has been a teacher at Kissimmee Middle and New Beginnings. She has been the lead GED instructor at ALCO since 2014, as well as the evening administrator at Osceola Technical College since 2018. She received her bachelor's degree in psychology from University of Central Florida, a master's degree in educational leadership from Liberty University, and an education specialist degree in curriculum instruction, management and administration from Nova Southeastern. And I have to tell you that when we met last week to talk about the opportunities that present themselves there at ALCO, Ms. Overstreet's passion for being an advocate for adult learners and deepening her understanding of that world was just very, very evident. I am confident she will do a fantastic job. With your approval, sir.
Very well.
Second.
So we have a motion to approve by Mr. Booth and a second by Mr. Whiteire. Discussion?
Yes, I need to exchange our voting machines to tell all the people who are sitting there. And so I'm not able to vote, but I'm very busy.
Very well. Any other comments or discussion before we call it for a vote?
Just clarification. Second was from our member Castillo.
Who did I say?
Whiteire.
Okay, thank you for the correction.
Yeah, I was too.
Ms. Carter, Ms. Over. Can you please make correct the record? Thank you. All right, so with that said, let's all take a vote. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Registered for votes, the vote passes for zero. I think that's it, right?
That's all.
The only one we have for this meeting? So that takes us up to public comments. So, public comments. Something that we've always done, traditional is the point where folks can can hand them our afforded time to address this public body. We do have some rules that we've always had, and that is that when the speaker comes to the podium, please announce their name and establish their residency for the record. We limit our public comments to three minutes. And it's very important that we are here to that because, well, just because that's actually scientifically the amount of time that a board really can pay attention to something intensely. We don't want to, we don't want to go ahead and let somebody talk for fifteen and we forget all the other comments. We want to remember them all. And so if you're, at the three minute mark, you may see a signal, you know, to wrap it up, which is okay. That way we could all, like I said, make them efficient and effective. Without any order in particular, I'm going to call the first person that I am, that I have given here. And that is Ms. Megan Carter. Ms. Carter, your opportunity to address this board. Please go forward.
Do you need my address or anything?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Megan Carter. I reside at 204 Ellsworth Court, Kissimmee, Florida 34758. I'm here today as a community member. I do find it frustrating and disingenuous, the mission statement of this board to create responsible productive citizens. I don't think it's responsible to send teachers and students and staff into schools during a pandemic. The teachers that I know and that I talk to are afraid to come up here. They're afraid to say anything. They're intimidated by the idea that they'll get fired for speaking out about things that are not going well. I just want to speak on what some of these teachers have been telling me. Air conditioners in elementary schools not turned on prior to the school day. Classrooms with eighty-plus degrees when they go in at seven fifteen AM. We also have complaints about teachers being forced to teach hybrid courses without technology issues being addressed. Just from a personal standpoint, I, I, I think that we had all summer, we've had since March, when this pandemic hit and we closed schools, y'all were on it. We closed schools, right? And now that we're still in a pandemic, we're, we're still sending kids and students and staff and teachers. Teachers want to know where their hand sanitizer is. They haven't gotten hand sanitizer. We've heard people have gotten rashes from some of the disinfectant sprays that they've received. That needs to be addressed. I also just think it's, it's very disingenuous to pretend that opening schools was going to be less disruptive than going into schools knowing that there were going to be cases and knowing that there were going to be people who get infected and have to quarantine. People at Point Santa High School would like to know why all of the cafeteria staff had substitutes today. There are rumors that all of that staff is in quarantine, and I would like that addressed. And I just think that with a little creativity, we could go back to school one hundred percent virtually, and we could have planned for this. And it's a shame that we haven't.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Ms. Christina Stewart. I'll just call it once the podium is ready, ma'am.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. My name is Christina Stewart. I live at 4656 Agarber Drive, Kissimmee. So I'm a taxpaying citizen. Last year I paid over fifty-two hundred dollars in property taxes. I am the parent of two Osceola school, public, public school children. I am the secretary of Kissimmee Middle School SAC, or at least I was last year. I'll see if they wrote me into it again. But my husband and son are also voting members. We own a small business in this county. I'm also a twenty-twenty, elected twenty-twenty presidential delegate. And as far as my personal finances, I have zero debt besides my home, no credit card, no student loans. After ten years of college and three degrees, both my cars are paid off. I know how to run a household budget and I know how to run a small business. So when unexpected situations happen, you have to know how to pivot and figure some things out. So some solutions I'm here to talk about. Basically, we know the district has the people power to go one hundred percent virtual from home. We're the largest employer in the county, almost double of what number two is. We know the money is there. We're tired of the lies that there is no money. Okay, so going one hundred percent virtual from home, we know we can do this without one worker losing a paycheck and without one parent having to turn down work. So just to go over some savings, if we close brick and mortar buildings, the power bill, the water bill, the utilities, we know that'll save hundreds of thousands of dollars over six to nine months. And not running the buses alone and diesel for the buses will save an additional amount of money. So there's additional things that we won't have cost for, office supplies, right? Things like that. So we know that shutting these buildings will save a ton of money. We also know we can move the people around. So if all the teachers are teaching virtually, they can have larger classes. Parents can help them with tech support. We can use cafeteria workers to still bag up lunches. We can use bus drivers in their own vehicles or maybe a small van to deliver food to the parents or families who can't come pick them up. We can find a job for everybody to still get paid and even still have everybody teaching and working from home where it's safe. Because this is not a permanent situation. Six to nine months, we'll have working vaccines, we'll have better results as far as what medications help this disease. This is not a permanent situation. We can figure out six to nine months of the budget. Now, just to go over the, just real quick, I got you. I'll wrap it up. So if we don't do this, the costs that will be involved, there will be lawsuits for the death. The deaths, right? There will be medical expenses even for the people who live. There will be lawsuits. So you can't, there's no reason not to go virtual from home. It is going to cost you far more to stay open.
Thank you.
And you're going to kill people.
Thank you. Ms. Tamika Lyles? Oh. Give superintendent a moment.
Sorry, I'm having paper towel issues tonight.
Good evening, Ms. Lyles.
Good evening, board. Thank you for allowing me to address you all once again. I want, I have a few things that I want to address to you all that is very consigning to me. One being our contact tracing that is going on in our schools. We were told a couple of weeks prior to schools opening that we were to have seating charts this year for our students in regards to COVID. We have done that as far as I know. I was notified by a teacher that these seating charts were being used because she had a student to test positive in her classroom, and they basically went in, looked at her seating chart, and made sure that the students that were sitting around that student quarantined with the student. Therefore, not notifying the parents of the other students in the classroom, nor the teacher that this student was tested positive. I have an issue with that. As a teacher, I feel that we should know when a student in our classroom tests positive. Right now, what we get is basically notification that we have a student that has moved from face-to-face instruction to online instruction, but there is no explanation as to what has occurred. So therefore, I have had personally, I've had several students to move from face-to-face to online instruction. Now I'm concerned about myself with my child that I have at home who is high risk, my mother who is at home with my child that's high risk, and I haven't been notified. Sure, those children's parents could have just decided that they just wanted them to move to online instruction. But the point being is that we have clear and concise been told evidence that teachers are not being advised of this. And if this is what is being meant by we're going to abide by the CDC guidelines, I would say that that's inappropriate for us teachers being put at risk. Real quick, I want to say that I know Dr. Pace mentioned testing for students. I have an issue with the testing for students right now. One being if we have students at home that we have had to stay at home so that they wouldn't be subjected to this virus, why would we send them into the schools to be tested? We're sending them into the very place where we said that we didn't want them to be. That doesn't make sense for them to be required to go into the school to be tested. Also, I want to say that the ADA requirements, ADA requests, teachers are being denied ADA requests. And I know that my time is short, so I'll end here. ADA requests have been put in for teachers that are high risk, and they have been denied and told that there's no online positions for them. So again, these high-risk teachers are now also in the classrooms and not being properly notified. And again, I just want to say, and our salaries have not been approved for this year. Thank you.
Mr. Allen?
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, sir. I get mixed up. Is it outside of six feet we can have these down or? Anyway, my name is Larry Allen. I'm from 618 Robin Lane, Kissimmee, Florida 34759. Thanks for allowing us to speak. They've pretty much hit everything that's been on my mind lately. I have about five thousand people I'm concerned with that I represent as the union president. They, my people are concerned about the whole contact tracing. What, what are the steps you take? Because it doesn't seem to make sense how this person's notified, this person right next to them is not notified, this person's quarantined even though they live with somebody, the person that, that lives with them is back at work. So maybe we should do some political, not political, public service announcements or something to make people understand. And that might mean less phone calls to you all and less phone calls to me. Because it doesn't make sense what the CDC and the Department of Health have decided this is how it's going to be. ADA accommodations, she hit that. Oh, I do need your help. Because from what I understand, we're still expected to be evaluated as far as the school grades go or the county grades. And that just does not make it, it's, it's almost like we've had, and people have had deaths in the family, but you still expect them to perform on a test. It doesn't really put your arms around the child and try to make them whole again. And I don't understand why the state of Florida is doing that. So school board members, I need your help on that. And that's all the complaining I'll do. What I will do is tell you about some of the things I experienced last week that actually gave me hope that this is not a sinking ship that's on fire, you know, and hurricanes coming and, you know. I went to Pafa and before, like the kids, they're just coming on, on campus. Every kid I saw had their mask on. There were so few of them. They were spaced out. You look in the cafeteria, oh my gosh, this might actually work. So it actually, it gave me some hope. Pafa, what was the other one? Chestnut? It was, you had to get your temperature taken while you're coming in. They had the place to get last shields there. So they were protected. And the other school I went to was Discovery, because that's my school. I've been there for fifteen years. And their, their student population was so low, it was, again, this might actually work if you have the low enough numbers and you have the students spaced out. Of course, there's still a whole lot of things that I disagree with on the plan. But we'll keep fighting those things. So just a little bit of positive for you all. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Allen?
Yeah.
I believe that that was all the comments that were scheduled. So we move on with our agenda and we have reached a point where we are going into our budget. So let's recess this public meeting and convene our budget workshop. Good afternoon, Ms. Craver.
Good afternoon. Members of the board, this is the final public hearing on the proposed millage rates and annual budget for the fiscal year 2020-21. Tonight's public hearing will include remarks regarding the proposed millage and budget. There will be an opportunity for public and board member comment. We will request that you adopt a resolution setting the proposed total millage levy to support the 2020-21 annual budget. And we will also request that you adopt a resolution approving the 2020-21 annual budget as presented. So let's start by explaining TRIM. The truth in millage legislation was enacted in nineteen eighty and the requirements are detailed under section 200.065 of Florida statutes. The statute dictates the form, size and placement of budget advertisements as well as the order of business during the budget hearings. TRIM requires two public hearings for open discussion of the millage rates and the proposed budgets of all taxing authorities. So what is a mill? A property tax levy of one dollar per one thousand dollars of taxable property value. The Florida Education Finance Program, or FEFP, is the mechanism by which state and local funds are allocated to Florida school districts. The Florida legislature sets the required local effort millage and the prior period funding adjustment millage rates that must be levied by the school board. The school board must levy the required local effort millage and prior period funding adjustment millage in order to receive any state funding under the Florida Education Finance Program. The total proposed millage related to school funding for the 2020-21 school year is 6.026 mils. This millage will generate revenue for the general operating and capital outlay funds. As previously mentioned, the millage rates are determined by the Florida legislature and this is the maximum millage that the school board is allowed to levy without a specific voter-approved referendum. The district must levy the required local effort and the prior period funding adjustment to receive approximately three hundred and ten point one million dollars in state FEFP funding. In addition, we must levy the full basic discretionary millage to receive seventeen million dollars in compression funding from the state. The proposed total millage rate related to school funding of 6.026 mils represents a decrease of 0.214 mils when compared to the previous year. The reduction in the required local effort from 3.984 to 3.761 mils equates to a reduced local tax levy of 6.8 million dollars when applied to the current tax rule. As required by TRIM, we must compare the proposed millage rate to the rollback rate. The rollback rate is the millage rate that you would, that would generate the same amount of revenue as last year and applied to the current year's adjusted taxable value. Under TRIM, the rollback rate is the basis for determining if tax rates have increased or decreased. So this slide compares the proposed millage rates to the rollback rates. The current state law rollback rate is 3.8063 mils. The current proposed state law millage rate for 2020-21 is 3.778 mils. The proposed rate is 0.74% less than the rollback rate. The rollback rate for the total millage is 5.9497 mils. The proposed total millage rate is 6.026 mils. The proposed total rate is 1.28% greater than the rollback rate. The Osceola County tax levy will increase by eleven point six million dollars for school-related taxes in 2020-21 as compared to the prior year. While the millage rate decreased, the tax roll is up nine point eight percent over the prior year, generating the net increase. So how are property taxes calculated? The taxable value of a homeowner's property equals the assessed value as determined by the Osceola County Property Appraisers Office less the twenty-five thousand dollar homestead exemption where applicable. The homestead exemption is an amount that is exempt from ad valorem taxes. The amount is established by law for properties used as the owner's primary residence and is normally twenty-five thousand dollars. The portion of property tax related to school funding equals the taxable value divided by a thousand times the school district millage rate. So in this example, a homeowner with an assessed value of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars with the homestead exemption will pay six hundred and two dollars and sixty cents of school-related ad valorem property tax to Osceola County. So how will this impact taxpayers in our county? This slide illustrates the changes in school-related property taxes for an Osceola County homeowner over the last several years. In this example, a home valued at two hundred and five thousand dollars in 2016 would have generated roughly one thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars and ninety cents in school-related property tax. If the owner qualified for Save Our Homes by the 2020-21 school year, the assessed value of that same home would be two hundred and twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Based on that valuation, the school-related property tax would be one thousand, one hundred and ninety-one dollars and seventy-six cents. This is a decrease of eleven dollars and six cents from the 2019 tax year and a four-year cumulative decrease of fifty-one dollars and fourteen cents. Now let's shift focus from taxes to the budget you'll be adopting tonight. Now let's shift focus from taxes to the budget you'll be adopting tonight. The key items in the budget have been shared with you in previous workshops and presentations. Based on current FTE projections, FEFP and local tax revenues for the 2020-21 budget are $23.5 million greater than the prior year. Funding per student will increase by $135 or 1.84% over the prior year. This next slide shows our long-range forecast. At the close of the 2019-20 school year, we're showing a surplus in the general fund as we have strategically increased the fund balance going into next year, where we anticipate a mid-year revenue cut, which is not yet reflected in the budget presented tonight. This multi-year forecast shows plans to then use the built-up reserves over the next few years to help us preserve jobs, our number-one priority, when we expect a continued revenue impact due to the economic downturn. Careful monitoring of budgetary resources will remain a top priority to ensure sustainability through any future funding shortfalls. This is the district's total budget in summary form. The general fund is the main fund from which most operating expenditures are paid. In addition, tonight you'll approve budgets for the debt service fund, which is used to pay for the outstanding bonds of the district, the capital projects fund, which accounts for major construction and renovation projects, special revenue fund, which consists of food service and federal grants, and the internal service fund, which accounts for the district's health insurance, property casualty, and workers' compensation programs. And the total budget is $1,322,828,631. So this slide's a little hard to see, but it does represent the annual budget at the level of detail that you'll be adopting tonight. And this is the same level of detail that you approve budget amendments throughout the year. So, Mr. Chairman, this is the time for any public comment. After public comment, the floor will be open for board member discussion and comments.
Thank you, Ms. Graber. It is now time for public comments. Anyone who wants to, please just let yourself be recognized and I'll call you to the podium. I believe there is no public comments.
I have a question.
That's okay. All right, well, make it from there, it's fine. Mr. Allen?
There's one slide where you said, I'm sorry, because it's so hard to see. Okay, for example, the $11 that is saved in property taxes. When you add all those $11 up, what would be the total amount that is, that is, that makes sense?
It's not saved, it's the what's not generated.
I mean, like, times every taxpayer in Osceola County homeowner?
That's on the slide, that's, how would my taxes change?
If the taxes are changing $11 for $100,000.
Got you, got you. Correct.
So what would it have been at the same rate? If the rate did not roll back, what would it have been? I ask this question all the time. But please remember, Mr. Allen, this is state law.
Yeah, Mr. Allen, if I can get back to you on that, I'll have to calculate that.
The state will also now require us to tell everybody we're raising their taxes when in fact their taxes are going down. Just so, just so you know, that's just how ridiculous this is. But I, I say that every year, just to remind everyone.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, do you have any, anything in the presentation or any slide showing how the flexibility in reporting from Rhonda Santas's executive order impacts the budget?
That's interesting. Ms. Graber, you have a?
The flexibility in reporting?
Correct.
Can you explain, I'm not familiar with what you're?
So, so in the executive order, DeSantis or Parker and Gabe, districts, if they would open brick-and-mortar schools, flexibility in reporting, I guess, the number of students who are attending, basically meaning they can kind of fudge the numbers to get more funding.
So it's not a fudge the numbers. There are two things. One, one is that the digital students or the students that are learning from home are fully funded in the executive order. So whether they're here in brick-and-mortar or whether they're doing the digital option from home is both fully funded.
What's your interpretation of the flexibility in reporting?
The other portion that I was gonna say is there is a hold harmless currently in that executive order, so that all districts will be funded based on the FTE projection for the first half of the year. So I'm not sure if either one of those are what you're referring to, but I'm not familiar with the terminology that you're using.
Okay.
Very well. Is there any? All right, so I guess that concludes the, Ms. Ives, I was thinking, Ms. Ives was?
Just for clarity, I don't know if I misunderstood something or missed something, but I want to know with the projections that are there, is there anything that will change if we were to move to virtual schooling? Will those projections that you have remain the same?
Yeah, the, a student is a student whether they're virtual or brick-and-mortar or digital, not, not virtual school, but digital, which I assume is what you're referring to.
As long as you have the brick-and-mortar open.
Correct.
Not funding to be the same for all, for the virtual schooling.
You have to have a brick-and-mortar option.
Thank you.
Good question. Any other questions, comments? The public board, the time is yours.
Thank you, Zeroh.
Mr. Weisler? Ms. Castillo? Thank you for helping out with that one, Mr. Thacker.
After the third or fourth time of this, thank you very much again.
You're memorized.
I'll do the next one if we don't have it.
Yeah, it requires three or four times. But you do, and you do a very good job each time. And, you know, this is for the benefit of the folks that, you know, that are watching and are interested. And, of course, you know, this is by statute and we have to provide this transparency, but any good organization would do the same regardless. And I really appreciate your work and, and your staff and your team putting this together each year. We've enjoyed it for the past seven years and, thank you.
Glad you enjoy it. I do need to read the resolutions into the record.
Let's proceed.
All right, so the millage rate adoption. We recommend that the board adopt Resolution 21-003 setting the required local effort, prior period funding adjustment, discretionary operating, and capital outlay millage rates for the 2020-21 school year as follows. Required local effort: 3.761 mils. Prior period funding adjustment: 0.017 mils. Discretionary operating: 0.748 mils. Capital outlay: 1.5 mils, for a total of 6.02 mils. And the total millage rate to be levied exceeds the rollback rate by 1.28%. So this does require a roll-call vote.
Very well. We'll begin with District 1 on Resolution 21-003. I'm sorry, begin with District.
Any need to call it?
Proceed.
Ms. Castillo?
Yeah.
Mr. Soto?
Aye.
Mr. Weisler?
Yeah.
Mr. Thacker?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have the budget adoption. And we recommend that the board adopt Resolution 21-004, adopting the budget in the amount of $1,322,828,631. And this also requires a roll-call vote.
Ms. Castillo?
Yes.
Mr. Soto?
Aye.
Mr. Weisler?
Aye.
Mr. Thacker?
Aye.
Mr. Booth?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. This concludes the final public hearing.
Thank you, sir.
If you want me to, I can.
All right, let's reconvene our public school board meeting. And it's time, we are going to, I'm gonna ask if any board member has any agenda modifications. Set an agenda, I guess, and the rest of the items. Ms. Castillo?
I do not, yeah.
I do not have any, Mr. Weisler, uh, sir, Mr. Thacker?
None.
Anything else to do?
No.
Very well, so we, uh, I'm sorry.
None, sir.
So we have a motion of this consent.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as well as the consent agenda.
Right, so we have a motion to approve by Mr. Thacker and seconded by Ms. Castillo. Any, they, before we vote?
Aye.
And all those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Mr. Five, aye, vote, vote back by two. We have an information, we have an information item that will be presented. It's, it is our instructional continuity plan. And I think Assistant Superintendent Scott Flowers, is he gonna present?
He's not.
Okay.
I just wanted to bring to the board's attention, you do have our instructional continuity plan. I provided you a hard copy of the document.
And that is this very beautiful document that we have.
Yes, Mr. Flowers has worked with our teaching and learning team throughout the summer to, as, as mentioned previously in, in some of the public comments, make sure that we have a clear plan to continue instruction in the event that we need to transition a child, a class, or even a school, or more schools, to digital learning. And that's outlined in this plan. It provides both the digital option, it clearly outlines the teacher responsibilities as well as the student responsibilities, time on task, what that looks like. And also includes a very important piece this year in that we have added very specifically the accommodations that we will make to support our ESE and our ELO learners as required by the state and the commissioners of emergency orders. So that document is here, it's not just sitting on the shelf. We're already implementing and using it. As you know, we revised our curriculum unit plans over the course of the spring and summer so that our digital learners and face-to-face learners are following the same district curriculum standards aligned with the state, using the same assessments and, and learning tasks so that this will make it a fairly easy process for folks who are wanting to transition or who need to transition for various reasons. So just wanted to provide that for your information as well as for our public. It is on our website.
Very impressive. So every parent, all of our members of community have, are, can make themselves available to this. And we also have a PDF version as well that they can see online.
Right, sir.
Very good, Dr. Pace. Board, anything on this instructional, on this informational item? No?
I think it's, it's very thorough and aren't we the first to have our standard?
Maybe.
All right.
I need to approve, um, 12.05.
Other business and finance, motion to approve by Mr. Thacker.
12.05, second.
And a second by Mr. Booth. Any discussion or questions on this item, board? It's just for 1201 to forward. All right, hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor to approve 12.05, please state aye.
Aye.
That's five zero.
Mr. Chairman, you're not opposed that we do, uh, facilities items one at a time?
Very well, so let's take them up.
And I'll make a motion to, to approve item 13.01.
I'd like Mr. Booth to approve 13.01, seconded by Mr. Weisler. Any discussion on this item before we take a vote? All right, and all those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Mr. Five, vote back by zero. Uh, on 13.02, do I have a motion?
I have a motion to approve 13.02.
Second.
Motion to approve 13.02 by Mr. Weisler, seconded by Ms. Castillo. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
That's by zero.
Chairman, making a motion to approve 13.03.
Motion to approve 13.03. We're starting on this motion.
Second.
By Ms. Castillo. Any discussion before we take a vote on 13.03?
Rhonda, there you are. Thank you for your work on this. Board, as you recall, this was an item that we had previously discussed. I, I think along with other board members had expressed concern about the valuation of the property. Our team went back, sharpened pencils, went back to work on it. And the net result is very much favorable to the school board. It's where it should be, in my estimation. And I'm grateful that we've added about another $2 million to the sale as a result of this network. So, good job, board.
Thank you, John, Mr. Weisler. Anything further on this item before we take a vote? No? And I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please state aye.
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 So I think I registered four votes in favor, one against, vote passed forward.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to postpone 13.04 until our next school board meeting with the request that we get an additional appraisal completed on the purchase of this property.
I mean, this thing is up for a vote when you want a postponement. Anyone wants to shed a little bit of light as to why we can't vote on this right now? Yes, please.
Good evening. The First Amendment is to extend the due diligence period. There's a requirement for a discrepancy survey that came up out of our Phase 1 environmental. The current agreement will actually expire if we don't move forward, at least with the First Amendment to, to extend the due diligence and the closing dates. So we just want to make sure we don't allow the agreement. We actually do have, yes, the closing, thank you. We actually have three appraisals on file. So the school board had two, there was more than a 10% difference. So by statute, we went out and got the third. So what I submitted were the two that were the closest that came up with the price of the property. So we do have three appraisals on file.
Okay, so I know I have two, I'd like to see the third one then.
Okay.
Board, part of my concern is that these appraisals are dated prior to the impacts of COVID-19, which all of those impacts haven't really been realized in the real estate market yet. As you guys know, this is what I do. So part of my concern would be moving forward with the purchase of this property without looking at either the third appraisal or having an additional appraisal completed that would contemplate the impacts and potential impacts on the real estate market as a result of COVID-19.
So, so I just need?
The amendment would allow us to do that. We would not be closing on this property, we would just be continuing with due diligence.
I would need a longer amendment.
Pardon me?
I would need a minimum of 30 days. So I would need a further amendment than the one we're requesting, which means going back to the owners and asking for a longer amendment period than we currently have.
How, how, how many days do you have in this amendment?
That everything would be in by October and we would close by November. So it'll take me a week to get proposals and then they'll want 30 days to 40.
Let's expedite it. So do it.
So Rhonda, I'm looking at the terms here.
It's over 3,000, there's a process.
In the amendment, and so October 30th for due diligence, November 30th for closing. How much additional time do you think you would need?
I think we'd have to be willing to maybe consider pushing the closing into December, which I think the owners would be okay with. But I do know they do have other people waiting for the property. They're just kind of waiting on our agreement to terminate.
Could I suggest you pass it as approved tonight? We will see if we can expedite it and stay within the deadlines. If we can't, we'll come back to the next meeting with everybody on board for the additional days we need.
So, to be clear, this would give us a due diligence period with an out in the purchase through October 30th.
The one that's before you this evening, yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay. My concern has been expressed, so I'm, I'm okay with approving the amendment to extend the due diligence period to allow for my questions to be answered and maybe other board members' questions be answered, if there are some. But would caution that I don't want us to run into a situation of risking that due diligence period lapsing prior to getting those questions answered that I think are very important.
So for clarification?
Anya, could you calendar, under my seat, for the last meeting in October, a status report on this? Because we'll either have the item ready to, to close or we'll give a status report as of that date. But we won't inadvertently ever pass that date.
So for clarification purposes, in light of what Mr. Weisler is saying, should it drop lower than 10% of the current two appraisals I have, then I would need a fourth appraisal, because I have to get two appraisals within.
We'll face that as it comes.
Okay.
So Chair, I would withdraw my motion to postpone and make a motion to approve the amendment to extend our due diligence period to the, to October 30th with our closing to honor before November 30th with the understanding that prior to the October 30th deadline of our due diligence period, that the board be presented with additional information and reconciliation of the concerns that I have and maybe others have about valuation.
I'll send that motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Um, my wife represents the seller of this property. I will be abstaining from voting on this item due to a conflict and I will fill out the, like I have to fill out the necessary.
Very well, so anything further before we take a vote? Seeing none, I'll ask for a vote. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Against, vote passed forward, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. [inaudible].
If it wasn't implied. Access to superintendent's...
Good evening, board members. I have before you our updated year two of the strategic plan that you approved last year in a very extensive workshop, 2019 to 2022. What the team did was to take your comments, your feedback from our All Vols workshop in June to update our strategies and key activities within the plan with the five current goals remaining the same. So as you'll see, Goal One still remains academic success. We are still looking at that high-quality, standards-based curriculum, the high-leverage strategies of read, write, talk, and solve, an intentional effort to focus on our subgroups and close the achievement gap, as well as to ensure that we're providing that acceleration across K-12 curriculum that's so important to make sure our students are college and career-ready. Goal Two remains about talent management, so that we can recruit, develop, and retain high-quality employees across this school district and across our community. I will share with you that I had a stocktake just this last week with the talent management team, and they've taken your activity, your suggestions from our June workshop very seriously in really looking at what we can do to be more creative with virtual job fairs and pop-up kinds of opportunities, and really try to expand our thinking about how we recruit and develop and retain our teachers and staff. And you'll hear more about that at our next stocktake with you all on talent management. Goal Three remains our commitment to fiscal responsibility, enhancing our operational efficiencies, very much like we were able to do last spring. We are shifting our focus, because we've had such success in the energy conservation areas, to really looking very specifically at our payroll processes and our paper processes. So anything that we can do to try to increase and leverage the power of technology and reduce paper, going from back, going back and forth, we're going to be looking at that. And then our maintenance team remains committed to moving forward with the Sterling Award. We are still focusing on our energy conservation efforts. We do know that, based on the pandemic task force responses that I talked to you about at one of our previous board meetings. We have lowered our temperature set points and extended our operational runtime in our schools, so that will come, of course, with some cost. We're continuing to work through our waste management efforts and other things that we can do, simply that behavior modification of remembering to turn off the lights is really, really powerful. And Mr. Creppenbacher, and Mr. Cavaney, and Shane Akry have done an amazing job. We were able to negotiate with the City of Kissimmee and leverage our status as a governmental entity to use our own district contract for waste management services at a considerable savings to what the company that the City of Kissimmee uses bears. And then, of course, in Goal Three C, we continue focused on improving the quality and the price efficiency of our healthcare services that we provide to our employees. We continue our ongoing discussions, obviously, with Provenure Rosen Care, and we are looking forward to moving into a new TPA service with our Evolutions Network as of October the first. Goal Four, our community engagement and governance, remains also a focus on what can we do to continue to build confidence and trust in our stakeholders. Four A in particular looks at what we can do to educate our employees about how they can better help their children and promote that active learning at home, as well as how they can be advocates for public education. So one of the things that we're talking about is partnering with potentially the Alliance for Education as an advocacy group that would help us expand some of that community outreach efforts that Leslie Campbell, our special programs team, Dr. Rafowski, and our choice team have already been engaging in, including things like a parent university, Grad Nation, and other community conversations. We also are looking at how we might change our choice fair. Don't think it's going to have to be face-to-face at OHP this year, where we had over 5,000 people last year in attendance, but we're looking at, could we do a drive-through choice fair, using the Osceola Heritage Park grounds for potentially looking at that? So continuing to be creative there. Four B is talking about that choice piece, and then four C is about our continuous improvement process. So continuing to leverage our stocktake process, our school improvement planning process, and really trying to bring everything under that one umbrella of continuous improvement, where then you've got the district strategic plan, our own district stocktake process, school improvement plans, the school-based stocktake process, our EPLCs, and our MTSS process, to really look at drilling down into the data, how can we support each and every learner to achieve our goals? And then finally, Goal Five remains focused on school safety and security. Five A is about the physical procedures and safety things that we put into place to protect our buildings and our teachers and staff while they're in them. Goal Five B remains focused on our social-emotional learning. We know that that's more important than ever with the level of stress and anxiety that is experienced, you know, throughout our community as a result of the pandemic. So we're continuing to look at that. And then finally, Five C, our new strategy statement is all about equity. We know that while we remain committed to serving every child, every chance, every day, and we talk about all means all, that we're not there yet. And it's an area that we remain committed to having intentional conversations about bias, about injustice, about looking at the data, what can we do to better support all of our learners and throughout our community? So Dr. Torres is the lead for this particular strategy statement in our research and accountability team. She's done a great job really digging into our equity data. She's found some amazing correlations between VPK enrollment, for example, and how that changes outcomes for kids all the way through graduation. Avid also has had a remarkable impact on student learning and on closing achievement gaps. So those are two programs that we're going to be working to promote and maintain and strengthen throughout the district. We also are looking at what we can do to connect social-emotional learning, because when we looked at it, our students' responses to the social-emotional survey that we did last spring had clear impact on student outcomes in terms of achievement as well. So those are just some things that I look forward to discussing with you all in more detail, but this is our strategic plan as we move forward, and I'm happy to take any comments, questions, or input that you may have.
All right, board, there's the likes for us.
You, just a brief comment, thank you as always, superintendent for your diligence, your work, and your intentionality in driving excellence in all areas of our strategic plan throughout our district. This board, with your partnership, has done a really good job over the last several years in creating a conference to promote the progress in this district. This plan is just a hard to manage, especially.
So I do believe we can take a vote to adopt, correct?
Yes, sir, please.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Ms. Castillo, second by Mr. Thacker. So we'll take a vote. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
I can register five, so it's five zero. Frank?
Yes, members of the board, a couple of items. At the last meeting, you approved a contract with applied ingenuity for the COVID testing. That was in addition to what the Health Department does. There was much emphasis on the ability to get test results back in particular timely fashion. The company represented that 99% of the time, they will return the test results within 24 to 36 hours. They don't want to be considered in breach when they run into what they say is the 1% at 48 to 72. So we felt comfortable writing in that we'll achieve those objectives, and if there's a blip, we'll work together to figure out why. Again, if Dr. Pace and the team finds that it's unacceptable based upon the timeframes, we have the ability to just stop using them at that point. So we think the district is protected, and I think staff did a good job of driving home the point of you better be timely on these tests. So I wanted to give you that update.
It's not permitted, it's not exclusive, correct?
It's not exclusive, no. So, and we don't have, we don't have any minimum amount to order, so it protects the district. Second thing, I just wanted to give you an update on healthcare. Dr. Pace has advised Florida Hospital that she and I will attend a meeting with them as well as Evolutions, the company that is negotiating with the district.
Frank?
Yes?
Florida Hospital or?
Advent Health. Okay? There are also positive negotiations going on right now with HCA Kissimmee-Pontiana. So just wanted to keep you updated. If you hear anything, because you talk with lots of people, please let us know right away so that we can make sure everybody's staying informed. Last thing is Mr. Booth had sent a note regarding St. Cloud Hospital, Mr. Lewis, who is the head director, about his wanting to work more with the district.
Mr. Burge?
Right, right. He met with Lauren, he spoke to me today. He will be leaving that role to take another role within Orlando Health. He asked that I call him next week, because he'd like to set up a meeting with Dr. Pace and everyone with a number of additional people. So that's the status of that, Mr. Booth.
Well, now that Orlando Health is a tier-one partner with having Orlando Health...
They're tier-one, right?
Yes.
Tier-one.
I said tier-one. They're tier-one already.
Yeah, well, the St. Cloud Hospital was kind of a weird, I serve on the board there, it was kind of a weird, it was owned in part by Orlando Health, but Orlando Health has not completely taken over ownership of the St. Cloud Hospital, so it falls right into our tier-one.
Yes, so thank you for the introduction.
And Mr. Burge is the great CEO, and I know he'll be fantastic to work with for the district.
And then following this board meeting, we will need to have an executive session, which is closed under Florida law. It will be transcribed by a court reporter, so that when the lawsuit is over, whatever said in the meeting will be public. All that can be talked about is either settlement and/or litigation strategy. It is the case of Marilyn Garcia versus the School Board of Osceola County, case number 2017 CA 858 AN in the Osceola County Circuit Court. Mr. Lawton will be in attendance, our defense counsel, along with each board member, Dr. Pace, myself, and Ms. Graver.
Thank you, Frank.
Thank you.
I knew we were missing somebody up here lately.
Yes, I did want to talk with the board. You know, you've always found such value in having a student representative serve with us. We've typically done, you know, a month each time with each school. I believe there's plenty of space here.
Absolutely.
If you would like to, for me to offer one to the dais, I did have a fantastic meeting last week with my senior focus group, representatives from every school. We did it through WebEx, but lots of really good feedback about what's important to them. It was a combination of both digital and face-to-face learners, and some doing a little bit of both. So, you know, I think that there's value in that, if it's something that the board would like for me to explore. Obviously, it would be something that we would seek parent approval for, want to make sure they would feel safe, but we do have our procedures in place for social distancing here, wearing our masks, taking our temperatures, if it's something the board wants me to pursue.
Yes.
Okay? The other piece I wanted to add is, you know, we've always had our, in the fall, our Top 10 Junior Breakfasts, which is just an amazing opportunity for you all as board members, as well as other members of our community, community leaders, to build connections with some of the highest-achieving students in all of our high schools, give them important information, their families important information about things they should be doing during your junior year to be ready for those very rigorous senior applications for colleges and scholarships in the fall of the next year. In talking with Dana and Anthony Cook, I do believe that we could do that very, very well in a virtual setting. We would probably transition it to evening time so that they could be at home with their families, have mom and dad, or grandma, or whomever with them there. We would be working with you all to set dates for your designated schools, and then also we certainly are here to help you if you have specific community members, community leaders you would like to include as a part of that discussion. But I just wanted to make sure that has your blessing as well. Yes.
Yeah, let's do it.
Okay. Sounds good.
Can we stay on this item just a little bit longer? I just want an update on, because, you know, it's been a few weeks, and we've had to, we have to implement our protocols and testing. Can you just run us a little bit what, you know?
Do you want me just to jump into the back-to-school update?
I think we're there, right?
Yep, that's next.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Good.
I don't have extensive remarks tonight. As you know, we are now into Week Three of what's the new school year. We have added a feature to our district website so that we are providing a weekly update of our COVID situations in all of our schools by school, so people can look for those very easily. I will say that we continue to see that the majority of situations are someone, a family member, someone in the community tested positive for COVID, and so we're having to quarantine a student. You know, there have been some other situations, but we're dealing with those closely, again, with our Department of Health, and making sure that we're following their guidance and also the CDC guidelines for how it happens, and those are also on our website. The testing contract, as Frank mentioned, has now been finalized. We are finalizing our testing procedures, so that as of next week, we'll have the two LPNs on contracted services available to offer testing for any teacher or paraprofessional on campus that wants it. And then we'll also be doing the optional voluntary-only COVID testing for students, if we wanted to do the pool testing. But parent permission slips will go out later this week so that we can get that information back. And again, it's strictly voluntary for both teachers and paraprofessionals, as well as for students, but we will have that service available through our contract with Applied Ingenuity. And then finally, I would just say, you know, we're continuing to support both digital and face-to-face teaching and learning, you know, implementing the ICP when we have to, working to get better at that every day. We just got the hover cams in last week, so they'll be going out to schools tomorrow to help provide additional technology for our simultaneous teachers, who are doing both face-to-face and digital learning at the same time. It's hard. I got to see it myself today, had an opportunity to go to Neo City in the morning, they're having some AC issues because one of the contractors cut the wires, and then, you know, whatever. But the teachers and students are still actively engaged, all of their teachers are simultaneous at Neo City because of the unique courses that they offer. I had an opportunity then to go to Parkway, where I saw teachers who had made use of additional monitors, so that they have both their laptop and their monitor, so they can provide instruction and monitor the student learning here. And then I went to Ventura. So I've gotten to see it across the three levels today, and Mr. Flowers is also out in schools, doing our best to support it. Our Scott Clark and the Green Chirts are actively engaged in coming up with additional tutorials, a video library of best practices in digital learning and simultaneous instruction. We know that it's hard, particularly for some of our littlest learners. We are continuing to see parents who, you know, want to switch back one way or the other, primarily we're starting to see more movement back into face-to-face instruction. Ms. Condo at Ventura had 15 students at her door this morning who wanted to come back to face-to-face.
Calls, I'm receiving.
So it's a matter of working through those schedules, it's a very, very complex process. We're asking a lot of our teachers, our students, and our administrators, and trying to make this work, but I'm super proud of everybody's commitment and making the best of what is admittedly a very challenging situation.
Thank you, Dr. Pace, thank you and your staff. I mean, if this is the time to do that. Are you good?
No, I just want to say thank you. You good then? Mr. Weissire? I'm going to hold off for now.
I'm sorry, thank you.
Mr. Thacker?
I just have a question on HIPAA and all the stuff that we're doing, and I don't know if you're the one to answer this or not, but I'm assuming that when somebody is tested or tested positive, be it a student or a teacher, they have rights under HIPAA to not have that made public and posted in places? How do you do it?
You know, we didn't handle that perfectly at the beginning, the first week or two, where we had those incidents with our contact tracing, but Mr. Creppenbacher and I had a follow-up conversation last Monday with the Department of Health, and the statements that we now say is, we have reason to believe that you've been in direct contact with someone who's been exposed to COVID. We do have letters that go home, both for direct exposure to COVID, advising people to quarantine, as well as calls are made in those situations, as well as an indirect exposure. So maybe not anyone sitting next to you or in the same area or on the same bus, but someone that you've been exposed to has that indirect piece. But based on, you know, conversations with Mr. Allen, and certainly, you know, concerns that were expressed, we are following the Department of Health's recommendation and using that particular guideline. We will be asking any of the teachers and paraprofessionals who want to have testing done at our school site with our LPNs to sign a release, so that at least then we can know when we get a positive test back. The same will be true with those students, but that's not information that we would publicly broadcast. We would strictly use it for our contact tracing efforts and our work with the Department of Health to make sure we're handling these situations right.
Members of the board, if I could answer that. When I met with Dr. Pace, my first question for her was, how transparent do you want to be? Because I'm seeing lawyers from all over the state with different opinions, and her statement was, I want to be as transparent as we can be under the law. And I can tell you, that's what's happening. She's putting everything on, as latest today, when Dana came in, putting all the information that we legally can put on the website, and we are very, very restricted when it comes to identifying anybody. So all the concerns expressed are valid concerns, it's just the law doesn't let you deal with it differently. So I would tell you, as your lawyer, I applaud what I've seen, because I've seen the other side of it with... side of it with some other lawyers and other superintendents, but whatever's going on, we're telling everybody as soon as we know anything.
All right, so what I wanted to have this dialogue is really around the same page as what Mr. Thacker brought up. I, you know, we're, we're already a few weeks, and so our protocols have been tested, and I just wanted to get an update about that. I mean, what are the challenges that you, that you, if you're comfortable? If not, you know, I'll just bring it back on a more detailed item for our next school board meeting, but just give me something at least now, because we have these protocols, and now that we're actually putting them into place, and we're having these positive consequences, we need to act upon them. So what, where are we at? How effective are they? Are they working the way we intended? Have there been some obstacles, whether it be from law, regulation, parent behavior? What can you tell us about that? And how does that affect these protocols and provide safety for our students and staff?
I think Chairman Soto, as a board, and certainly, you know, in my role here, we committed from the very beginning to looking at this like we do everything else, from a continuous improvement viewpoint, so that we are going to continue to tweak, we're going to continue to improve as we move through this process, as the guidelines change, as guidance from the Department of Health changes. We're continuing to monitor and follow up and do the most important things that we can do. The best thing I can continue to advocate for is this: if someone that you know has been tested positive for COVID that you've been in direct contact with, or you start to show symptoms, do not come to work and do not send your children to school. That's the most important thing I can say. You know, we've had a couple of situations where, you know, quite frankly, somebody felt like it was more important to go to work and send their kids to school, even though they knew that they had tested positive for COVID. You know, that's a situation where we're having to then quarantine a larger number of students than we would ordinarily have to quarantine. But those are the things that we continue. Last week, I'm going to put it out there on the table. We had someone who was told to quarantine more than one child, who was sent to school anyway, and then parents said, I can't come pick them up. So in that kind of a situation, we're going to isolate that child, but I said, if you can't be here by the end of the day, we're going to have no choice but to call DCF. Those aren't the conversations that we want to have, and the vast majority of people are being very understanding and supportive and, you know, cooperative with what it is we're trying to do.
Dr. Pace, on this particular issue, yes, I agree. I think that what I, what I've been hearing is, is that for the most part, there's been a lot of cooperation, I think, especially for our students. They're doing very well with the mask and just following instructions.
Very well.
But in, in these situations where, you know, just a blatant disregard, or an unwillingness to cooperate with our, with our protocols is putting our staff or students at risk, we have a, we have, right, a protocol to deal with that, correct? Like you just mentioned with DCF. Would it also help if perhaps we can, the school district can engage in a, in another kind of public education campaign, kind of the same sort that we did before we started the school, the school year? And just to keep on reinforcing that and encouraging, and, and well, mostly also, you know, just thanking the parents for what they're doing, and that we're doing right. It looks like the numbers are improving. In many ways, what we're doing in our school districts and in our schools shows a better comportment than what we may even see out in, you know, in public.
Certainly better than the colleges and universities.
Oh, and better than the 7-Elevens, and better than a lot of places.
I will tell you, on all of my school visits today, the students were wearing their masks. I mean, not, not a single child that we have to say, you know, you got to have your mask on, or pull your mask, I mean, and, and social distancing, you know, it's more difficult for older students to understand. The little guys, they're standing on the lines one right after the other, knowing exactly where they need to go. So it's a matter of, again, continuing to get better at this, but we'll continue our messaging as well, Mr. Soto, just like you said.
All right, so I decided to be last, but if anybody else wants to chime in before we go.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, all of us.
Thank you.
You did a great work, and we appreciate it.
So then we go onto new business. I'll ask the board members, does anybody have a new business they want to? Yes?
I just wanted to bring up to the board, I was at Osceola High School earlier in the week, and two or three years ago, I can't remember now, we decided that the district would take over the fields, the maintenance mowing and all that stuff of the field. And at that time, Osceola gave up some equipment and back to the district, and called, very upset, and I said, just, just wait, let's see what's happened. Give it a chance. When they gave it a chance, and that field is a disaster. Shaping of it is a disaster now. The grass that was there is pretty much 75% weeds. Instead of being mowed several times a week, it's now mowed once every week, every other week. I know we've done a lot at other fields, that's kind of a, not one of the place for our current athletic programs. I'd like to have, I'd like to ask the staff to take a look at scraping that, clearly not now, after our football season, but after the season, scraping and putting a new turf on it. This is not like the million-dollar official turf. This is probably, it's not cheap, it's probably $100,000.
You have a sponsor?
No. The other thing, I know, I noticed today or yesterday, when I was going through some of the agenda, the track is in terrible shape. It is slated for a 21 or 22 redo, and I can't remember which that is. I just don't like it. Maybe look at the, do that whole thing in conjunction. There's holes in the track, there's patch marks. It's being redone, it's pretty poor shape. It's up to you guys, if y'all are okay with asking, if we could ask the staff, the staff will have to bring it back to us, a proposal back.
All right. I just heard that Mr. Booth said when he gets on the county commission, he was going to propose the sponsorship.
Not his district.
Yeah, no, no, no. I'm not a district. You're in Osceola County. Yeah, Osceola County. On Osceola High School. Yeah, yeah. Thank Mr. Thacker, I'm in full support of what you said, that, that, that field and some of those programs out there have been brought to our attention over the years, and I appreciate your leadership on this and bringing it forward. I fully support and move forward with your recommendation. I do have some. The Hark's Office is going to take care of it. No, I would like to say I'm in full support from Mr. Thacker. I'd also like to add, Dr. Pace, for your review, I have dealt with this on several occasions for a high school in my district, where the equipment was, was taken, essentially, but the, but outside individuals or a booster club wanted to bring in more equipment, because we do have coaches and athletic directors that do want to go the extra mile, and it seems at this point, we have some policies in place that just simply don't allow that to happen. So I'd, I'd like to see maybe we, you know, if it's not going to work as, as we designed it, then we certainly need to tweak that, we're good at that around here. So I don't want to be putting schools that want to do the extra work at a disadvantage, because if they have coaches or athletic directors that want to get out there on Saturday afternoons, and they want to make my girls go help them, that's fine too, because they do. But I want to make sure they have the equipment to be able to get that done, and not being, being told they can't touch the field, or they can't do this, or they can't do that. They should absolutely take ownership of those facilities, and keep them clean, and keep them up, and, and keep the weeds out, keep the crowning, you know, we used to do it when I was in school too. So I'd be in full support of what Mr. Thacker is asking. I'd also be in support of, maybe kind of relooking, maybe still have the district involvement on keeping, the upkeep of the fields, but, but let's, let's kind of relax some of these policies and say, you can't have this, or you can't have that, or no. If the booster club buys a lawnmower, we're going to come and take it, let's, let's not have those conversations anymore. I don't, I don't want to do that anymore, so. And, and let's remember also, and this pains me to say this, it truly does, as a, as an old bulldog. Osceola County, Osceola High School is one of the premier football schools. I mean, huh? I'm going to say it once, in the entire state of Florida, maybe even a, a team that's recognized nationally. They deserve to be, and I would say that they have quite a few track stars as well. They deserve to have those amenities there, just as good as any other, or better than any other school in the county.
Dr. Pace?
I was just going to add that Mr. Thacker is correct. Osceola High School's track is scheduled for resurfacing on 2022. I will have the team research the field condition and the track conditions. If we're going to do one, it probably makes sense to do both at the same time, so we'll see what we can do on those particular things and bring something back to you.
All right, so that was new business. Any other board member with new business? All right, so we're going to go ahead and recess and convene our executive session. Thank you for everyone who attended. We will. Two telephones.